Bristol, Tennessee City Council Meeting of November 7th, 2017. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Here.
Councilwoman King?
Here.
Councilwoman Powers?
Here.
Mayor Young?
Here.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone who's here tonight and thank you for attending. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening, and a sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I'll note each time when public comment is welcomed. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter city council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. I'd like to ask Pastor Sam Haynes of New Grace Baptist Church in Bristol, Tennessee to lead our invocation, and I will follow with our pledge. If you'd please stand with us.
Let's pray. Father, we sure do thank you that we live in a place like Bristol. Lord, thank you for what you've done for us here. A good place to live, truly it is. And we thank you for that. Thank you for these people, Lord, that make decisions, thinking, wondering what's best for all the place here. And I pray you'll bless them. I pray you'll give them wisdom every decision they make. I pray you'll help them and encourage them. And Lord, I pray you'll bless our city and help it to continue to be what you want it to be and be a good place to live. Again, Lord, we sure do thank you for being so good to us, and we ask you to bless this meeting tonight. I ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Sora, do you have any items to be added to this evening's agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda's complete.
All right. We have one proclamation on this evening's agenda, designating November 25th as Small Business Saturday. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Michelle Rennie to read the proclamation. Ms. Maggie Bishop, Executive Director of Believe in Bristol, is with us this evening to accept the proclamation and share a few words about the importance of Small Business Saturday to our downtown merchants.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years, and whereas small businesses employ over 48% of all businesses in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants, and whereas 91% of consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important, and whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping, and whereas, City of Bristol, Tennessee supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the mayor, Jack Young, does hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, the 7th day of November, 2017.
On behalf of the Believe in Bristol Board of Directors and committee members, I would like to thank the City of Bristol, Tennessee for recognizing this proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Small Business Saturday means a great deal to our downtown merchants. It has quickly become, over the past seven years, has quickly become one of the best years, best days of the year for our downtown merchants. So we are very grateful to the city for recognizing this special day. And I encourage everyone here to definitely get out on Small Business Saturday. And an important note is that over 60% of every dollar that is spent in small businesses comes back to our local economy. So it's very, very important to still hit those Black Friday and Cyber Monday deals, but more importantly, Small Business Saturday. So thank you again.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. All right, moving on our, on the agenda. We have no presentations or public hearings on tonight's agenda, so we'll move to Appearance of Citizens. This item of our agenda provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only, and a response will not likely be made at this time, since in most cases neither council nor city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual, and groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I've been provided a list of individuals desiring to address council this evening, and first is Mr. Fleener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I called city manager the other day, told him what I was wanting to do and bring here to present tonight, and explain what I had, and he said this would be a good time to do this. And he said if I could keep it under an hour, that would be good. So I've managed to do that. This is a two-part story, I guess, if you will. This is what I'm here tonight for. I'm affiliated with a local motorcycle group, the Golding Riders of the Tri-Cities. It used to be, there was one in each town, and we've merged into the Tri-Cities. One of our main, primary functions that we do, we raise money in different ways all year round, and we adopted the St. Jude Hospital in Memphis that we raised this money for. We do other local things for individual needs also, but the St. Jude is our biggest thing. Last year, we hit the $100,000 mark, which we thought was pretty good. This year, we took $114,000 down to them. We have other chapters across the state that have bought in with us. They do money-making things. And once a year, we drive from Bristol to Memphis, picking up these other chapters, taking this money, and donating it to St. Jude. It's amazing what they do. I know all of you have probably heard stories about it. When Danny Thomas started, there was about a 4% survival rate of these children. Now they're above 94%. So it's just awesome what they do. A couple of things that we do to help raise money, two of our bigger moneymakers. We have a putt-hut contest at the putt-hut in Kingsport. The owner of the putt-hut, and he also owns the one in Bristol, makes a day available for us. Last year, we brought in $21,000 from that event. One of the other big ones, we have a golf tournament. Mitch Walters let us have the country club this year. We raised about $7,000. And we've talked about this, and talking to the owner of the putt-hut, he also owns the one in Bristol. So we're going to, not everybody plays golf. I make a joke out of it when I play, but anybody can play putt-hut. He has agreed, we're going to bring a putt-hut tournament to the Bristol putt-hut course, June 21st, I think. Last year, we raised, like I said, $21,000 in Kingsport. I've grown up in Bristol, and I want Bristol to show that we can do that kind of money too. So we're really going to promote it. I'm going to come back and remind you all closer to the date. But we want this to be as big in Bristol as it is in Kingsport, and I know we can do it. So that's something we want to do, and we plan to do that. But all that said, going back, the main reason I'm here tonight for all of this is our St. Jude ride, we start with about 80 motorcycles when we pull out of Bristol. Mitch lets us start from his motorcycle place on West State. We drive all the way down to Dixon, stop for the night, going into Memphis Saturday, present the money, and then come back home. But when you have that type of logistic to deal with, traffic is an issue. And law enforcement for years has helped us with this, getting us through intersections, getting us off the interstate and back on at exits and everything like that. Even to the extent Knox County Sheriff's Department, their motorcycle division picks us up and takes us through Knoxville. Memphis City Police Motorcycle Division picks us up at the city limit and gets us. And by the time we get to Memphis this past year, we had 108 motorcycles. So it's an issue to get everybody there safe, and they've done a tremendous job. In years past, we've sent letters of appreciation and thank you. This year, I've wanted to do one step farther and actually go to a lot of the departments that help us and give the recognition. We send a letter of appreciation, and I know the chiefs and the sheriffs get it, and I hope they share it with their officers that help us. But this year, I'm going to, like, in this county, for example, we have Bristol, Tennessee, Bristol, Virginia, the Sheriff's Department, Kingsport, all of the Hawkins County Police, and they helped us to get out of town, in a sense. But we wanted to just, at this point, take to tell you all how much we appreciate and let you know what you already know. The police department that you've got here was very instrumental in helping us, and I just wanted to take that time to point that out to you all. And I have a copy of the letter of appreciation that I was going to give to the chief. I think he is here. But I've got copies that I want to give you all, too, just to let you know.
If you'll provide that to our officer here?
Okay. I may have miscounted. I think I've got one short, so somebody'll have to share or something.
That's all right.
Anyway, I just wanted you all to see that, too, and let it, you know already what they do. Police get a bad rap at times, but we've got some of the best in this area. And it's just something I wanted to share with you all that I'm doing everywhere I can. And since I see the fires, all the years I worked with them when I was at the county, with Sheriff's Department, when I was with EMS, and when I was at EMA, I worked with all of them. And I know Chief Barnes, he's here, too, the fire department. You've got two of the best agencies in this city, and I just, you hear the all craps every once in a while, but you never hear the attaboys, and we've always said it takes about three attaboys to eliminate one all crap. So this is an attaboy that they can put in their file.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Mabry.
I'm Eddie Mabry, and I live 1009 Sunnybrook Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. Back to just have the council and mayor to be mindful that we are still concerned about the project that was taken at the corner of Sunnybrook Drive and the Volunteer Parkway. And our concerns are equally as great as the family of people that live there in the Sunnybrook subdivision. We certainly not heard anything from you, your committees, as to where or what is being done other than the few things we hear from time to time from the attorney that we have. And right now, a lot of the people is concerned about where they are with this project down there. With that said and done, I believe, unless I misunderstand, that you say you came out of a manufacturing-industrial-style life and familiar with that. And my concern is that we don't have manufacturing in Bristol. It doesn't seem like that the council and the, I guess, the manager, whoever it is, that should be reaching out to manufacturing companies that will come in here and pay a person a decent wage. Wages are extremely low. We hear a lot of talk about getting wages up. And normally, the only ones that goes up is those that are already up. And if you could speak to what you're doing at some other time that we can talk about what's going on, that we can have a more settled mind. It's awful difficult for churches in this area that are being left with people that does not earn monies, and they are not able to contribute to the expenses. And they are going down financially because of the like of those funds that people have. So we're very much concerned about where you're going in that area. I know that doesn't probably have much of a bearing on me, because I have survived to the years that I am. And our future, though, for others coming along, they need to have a greater opportunity of earning a decent wage without trying to work three or four jobs that doesn't pay them enough when they have gone to three different jobs to make the bills that they have accumulated for the month.
Thank you, Mr. Mabry. Any other members of the public wish to make comment at this time? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to appointments. Tonight, we'll consider an appointment to the Tree Board. This appointment will serve a four-year term, ending June 30th, 2021. The candidate is MC Bullock. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots.
Ms. Bullock has served on other boards, maybe served on this board in the past as well, but she does a really good job, and she's very diligent in her discussions and her actions. So I think she'll serve us really well.
Okay. Council McKean votes for MC Bullock. Councilwoman Powers votes for MC Bullock. Mayor Young votes for MC Bullock. Councilwoman Rennie votes for MC Bullock. And Vice Mayor Farrobin votes for MC Bullock.
Congratulations. We have no ordinances tonight, so we will move on to resolutions. And our first resolution of the night is Resolution 17-117, approving an amendment to the City of Bristol redevelopment plan by renaming and expanding the Green Property Redevelopment District. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter for the public?
Mr. Mayor, we're glad to, this was an item that was presented to city council early this fall during a work session. As you may recall, one of our goals for fiscal 2017 was to develop a redevelopment strategy for the West State Street corridor. And you've heard certain elements of that during the, during the presentation at your work session. One of those that, elements that would require council consideration, formal consideration, is the designation or the expansion of the Green West State Street Redevelopment District. As council is aware, the Bristol Housing Authority has a redevelopment plan. And that identifies areas that must meet certain conditions in order to redevelop using a toolbox of financial incentives. The Housing Authority looked at this issue on October 25th, conducted a public hearing, and approved the expansion and renaming of this district. You may recall, this is the Third Amendment to the Green District that we've had. Earlier this year, the, this particular area was amended to broaden the borders to 10th Street on the west and Olive Broad Street on the south, as well as West State Street on the north. This particular amendment extends the western border from 10th Street, as the map indicates, to 18th Street and the corridor along that area. Again, the, what this does for this area, it provides, under the right project, it makes those projects eligible for tax increment financing, which sometimes is required in order for the project to advance. Any, any project, what we're asking you tonight in Resolution 17-117 is to amend the district boundaries and to rename the district. Any future project would have to come back to the city council, as well as the county commission, in order to avail itself of the tax increment financing incentives.
All right. Any member of council have questions for staff? I do have a couple, just for clarification. One is, I think we all get this question pretty frequently. Are there any active projects that have been announced regarding these properties?
The best way for me to answer that is there are no active projects that have been announced.
Thank you. Then the other part is, what is the western boundary of this now?
The western boundary is 18th Street.
Okay. I realize that was a minor amendment from last time.
There was, and that's, the narrative was to 18th Street, but the attached boundary in which the Housing Authority considered had it stopping at 17th Street. And with that discrepancy, that required the process to go back to the Housing Authority.
And to be clear, 18th Street is where the old Tri-City Bank at State Street is?
No, that's 17th Street. 18th Street is one block west of there. I think the, the distribution center that's owned by, it was originally owned by King Pharmaceutical and now is part of Gregory Pharmaceuticals. That would, 18th Street is adjacent to that property, to give you a kind of a physical landmark.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion. Second.
All right. Further discussion?
I think it's great that this has been presented this evening and that we're having the opportunity to vote on this. I see it as an opportunity to redevelop that area, to bring it into a more current state, less encouraging redevelopment, new projects and new businesses. I think it's a great thing.
I do know the first hearing that they had, well, it might not have been the first hearing, but one of the hearings that came before the Housing Authority, they had a lot of participation, probably one of the most active public hearings on a property being considered for redevelopment. And I think that's, that's good, because people were able to come and hear the message directly of what it is and what it is not, and it really does set the groundwork for future development. Would anyone in our audience like to comment on this agenda item? All right. Seeing none, I believe we're ready for the vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have Resolution 17-118, awarding a bid for the purchase and planting of streetscape trees in downtown Bristol. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter to the public?
Mr. Mayor, we're glad to, and perhaps while I'm giving a brief overview, I'd ask Terry Napier, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to come to the podium. I think he's going to talk a little more, a bit more in-depth about the project. Normally, you would see bids reflected on your consent agenda, and you would consider those as part of, part of a routine procedures. We wanted to pull this particular resolution off the consent agenda and draw a little bit more attention to it. This has been a part of our plan of work for fiscal 2017. Our sister city at that time did not, the timing wasn't right for them. So it became a goal for fiscal 2018. And this, this is the first part of that, as far as actually moving forward with it. But you may remember, in October of 2016, we had a joint meeting with Bristol, Virginia, where the Department of Forestry for the University of Tennessee presented a streetscape plan for downtown. As most of you are aware, in 1983, the cities jointly refurbished their downtown and with cobbing and guttering and the trees that you currently see, which are aristocrat pears. 1983 was a long time ago, and those trees have long since exceeded their useful life in a streetscape-type environment. So this plan, it replaces the trees there, and Terry's going to speak more specifically to that. But what the Resolution 17-118 does tonight, it authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Terry Henderson Landscaping of Johnson City, Tennessee, which submitted the low bid in the amount of $17,144 for the trees for both sides of town. Also referenced in that resolution and included in your packet is a, is a letter agreement formalizing the relationship in which we will manage the contract, and Bristol, Virginia will then reimburse us for their proportionate share of the plant material. Now, this doesn't involve all of the costs associated with this. There's still, this is just the plant material. As you all recall, when we've discussed this project, as soon as the Christmas shopping season concludes downtown, our Public Works and Parks and Recreation crews will begin the removal of the old trees. And this is going to be a significant effort. As indicated, the trees are well-established. So as they're removed, there'll be other, other pieces of material that will need to be purchased that will go in. There's, as you may recall, there's a galvanized pipe that these old trees are. Now, we're not going to use the old, at 1983, technology, but we will use material to restrict the root growth, so we don't have such rapidly growing trees in that area. So there will be more expenditures in material beyond just the labor effort. The entire project is slated to be completed prior to our April race. The entire project is slated to be completed prior to our April race. So we've got a narrow window of time to focus on the project. But it's also coincidentally, that's the perfect time to plant trees. So with that, Terry, would you like to share a little bit more detail about the plan?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Sore stated, this was presented as a research project for students at University of Tennessee Department of Forestry. And the one thing that, if you didn't get anything else out of their presentation, was these trees have exceeded their life expectancy in the downtown. You know, if they were out in the woods somewhere, maybe not. But in our downtown environment, with, you know, all the limited soils and everything, they need to be replaced. So that's an absolute. But what we have, you know, I was telling Mr. Sore, if you drive downtown right now at sunset, you see this maroon glow all the way downtown. All the trees are marooned. Well, that looks pretty, but it's also problematic. And because if you get a disease, or if you get a parasite, it's going to attack one tree and you're going to lose every tree. So what the Division of Forestry recommends when they put together their plantings is that you use multiple varieties of trees. So if you, you won't have a catastrophic loss, you won't lose all your trees. But you also get different combinations of color. You get different combinations of colors, different seasons. So the look downtown will be different than what it has been for many years now. When we take the existing trees down, obviously, it's going to be noticeable different. You know, just from this one photograph, you know, the old trees, I mean, there's some ugly branches, you know, we trim, they die, we can't keep up with them. The new trees that we plant, we're going to plant about a two-inch caliper tree. They'll be six, seven foot tall. But we hope, as they grow and we keep them pruned, you're going to see more of the buildings. And each tree was specifically selected for where its location is at, as far as what building it's in front of. So of the seven different species of trees, a lot of time went into where that tree is at. And they did the best they could to pair on both sides of town. We have more trees than Bristol, Virginia does. So they tried to match up everything from side to side, and it's almost perfect. But it will be a drastic change to the view downtown. This is a slide, as I was talking about, the pairings of the trees. This plan also replaces all the trees at the downtown center, which is another reason why we have more trees than they do. Those trees, again, have just exceeded their life. The largest tree there is actually a tree that we moved from Central Elementary School, and it just, it didn't survive in that environment. It's just not the right environment. So all those trees will be replaced as well. So what you're going to have, the different types of trees, you're going to have a bosque elm tree, an eastern red bud, which is primarily in the downtown center. You'll have the male genko, which is, doesn't produce the mass that some of the genkos do, a golden rain tree, Japanese zavoka, and a skyline honey locust, and the sweet gum. So again, each of those trees, as you look at the sampling, have a unique look to them. So when those seven varieties are spread out through downtown, it's going to look significantly different. But I think it's going to be an impressive look that highlights the other work that we've done downtown to enhance the charm of our downtown. As Mr. Sore said, you know, we'll start removing trees, working with Bristol, Virginia. We've talked to their Public Works folks, and we're trying to learn a little bit. We know we've got a lot of underground utilities to deal with. You know, cutting the trees down will be the easy part, getting the roots and stumps out. We'll work with Maggie from Believe in Bristol to make sure our downtown businesses know when we're working. We're going to work with Bristol, Virginia to try and do one block at a time so we are as, you know, little disruption as possible. Because again, we have a very short period of time to get that done. So it'll be all hands on deck for a pretty short period of time. And to get everything ready for our contractor to plant the trees, we'll prepare the site for the trees to be planted, and the contractor will actually come and place the trees in the ground. And that's part of our one-year warranty, is they put the tree in the ground. I'll ask you any questions you have.
I would like to say that, assuming you approve Resolution 17-118, shortly after this, our Community Relations Department will begin a public campaign to help everyone understand what we're doing, the various elements of it, that, as Terry said, there are trees that are going back, this is, they're at the end of their useful life, and this is an important project for our downtown. But we will do a strong campaign of public notice involved with this.
One question I had, and I know it's in the details of our package, but you reiterated that we had more trees. And can you confirm that that's why we're paying more?
Yes, I guess that is why we're paying more, is because we have more trees. I actually bid the trees out by variety, so I could actually take the exact tree and divide the math as exact as it can be based on the tree count and species.
Also, so this work will be done January, February, and that can be rough on our employees.
Oh, we love working out in the cold.
So I just want to say thank you ahead of time, and hopefully, people will bring some hot chocolate and hot coffee and things to help out when their little fingers are frozen.
I can say, when we're downtown shoveling snow, our merchants downtown are very good to the folks' work.
They might not be for this.
Yeah, they will be. We're good folks downtown.
I'd like to make just a quick comment. This is very much a citizen-driven project. It came out of Coffee with the Mayor and Downtown Merchants, our first Coffee with the Mayor. And it was our downtown merchants that impressed upon us the need to take action along this. Secondly, what a great partnership. I'm delighted that Bristol, Virginia is on board with us. And again, it shows that we are a unique community that really does care about each other. And in the presentation, when UT did this for us, it was brought, it was made very clear that this is economic development. It is aesthetic beautification. But statistically, we know that the look of a downtown, if the trees get to be too big, or brittle, or hazardous, that it sends the message that perhaps there's not as much interest in the downtown as there once was. And I think that this is a great source of renewed energy for our downtown. So I agree. Thank you to our city workers in Bristol, Virginia, and everyone for getting this all together, and especially to our downtown merchants.
Also, just add, for partnership, it's great to take advantage of UT with the services that they have and can provide, and for them to be working in our community, that's pretty cool, too.
And they're excited. We hope that now that the nature center's getting up and running, they were excited about coming up and doing some more research projects. So this may spawn in a better relationship with the departments of UT.
All right. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion of Resolution 17-117? Oh, I'm sorry, 17-118. All right, hearing none, I believe we're ready for the vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rinning?
Yes.
All right. And believe it or not, this brings us to the consent agenda already. Mr. Sore, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have the minutes of the October 3rd call City Council meeting, and the minutes of the, that was not a call meeting, but the minutes of the October 23rd City Council Work Session, minutes of the Resolution 17-119, authorizing the purchase of software support for GIS, Resolution 17-120, authorizing participation in the TML Risk Management Pool Drive Safety Matching Grant Program, Resolution 17-121, awarding a bid for the purchase of a four-wheel-drive vehicle, Resolution 17-122, awarding a bid for the purchase of a one-ton pickup truck with service body, Resolution 17-123, awarding a bid for the purchase of a mini excavator, Resolution 17-124, awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk asphalt products, Resolution 17-125, awarding a bid for the purchase of two one-ton pickup trucks, Resolution 17-126, approving an agreement for engineering services for Virginia Avenue Pedestrian Improvements, and Resolution 17-127, designating a member of City Council to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
All right. Would any member of council like any item removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Tara, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rinning?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to our Board of Education Liaison Report. We have Dr. Gary Lilly with us this evening.
Thought you might be interested to know that we are doing our annual strategic planning review tomorrow. And of course, that's where we review progress to this point and make plans for the future. And our mission is to prepare students for post-secondary success in college and career. And obviously, that aligns very well with economic development efforts. And we do appreciate the City Council's support and involvement in our school system. We do have a few challenges, but we've got some successes, too. And if you will indulge me, I'd like to tell you about a few of those. The State Department, just two or three weeks ago, released their list of reward schools. Reward schools are defined as schools in the top 5% in the state in either progress, performance, or both. So there are 1,833 schools in Tennessee that educate almost a million students in K-12. So the number of progress schools, there were 85 in the state. Performance schools was a little more exclusive, at 59 in the state. And for both, only 25 schools out of that 1,833 were recognized for both progress and performance. So we were very pleased that we had three schools recognized on the performance list. And those schools were Haynesfield Elementary, Holston View Elementary, and Tops, which is our online high school. So not to take away from the other great things going on in other school districts, but just by way of illustrating the significance of having three schools on the performance list, I would like to make a few comparisons. So we had three schools, we've got just over 4,000 students. Maryville City also had three schools identified on the performance list. They've got just over 5,000 students. From there, it jumps up quite a bit. Rutherford County, Tennessee, also had three schools identified on that list. They've got over 43,000 students. Hamilton County also had three schools identified. They've got almost 45,000 students. Knox County Beatus, they had four schools on that list, but of course, they've got over 60,000 students. And finally, Davidson County, which is the Nashville area, also had four schools identified, but they've got just over 85,000 students. So we were very pleased about that. And we also had one school that was recognized as one of those 25 for both progress and performance, and that was Evoque Elementary School. Again, just by way of comparison, there was only one other school in all of northeast Tennessee that made that list, and that was the University School in Washington County. And in all of the East Grand Region, the only districts that had a school on that list was Bristol, Washington County, and Maryville. So we thought having four schools identified as reward schools was very commendable. And I'd like to give the credit to the school leaders and teachers, their work and hard every day with our students to provide opportunities. And we're just very thankful for them and thankful for you. Thanks.
Thank you. On to our City Managers' Report.
Yes, Mayor, we have a lot of activity in the coming month, and I want to highlight a number of those dates and hope you'll be able to participate in as many of these as you possibly can. The first one is tomorrow morning. At 10 o'clock at Tri-Cities Airport, we'll have the Aerospace Park Intergovernmental Agreement Signing Ceremony. The original invitation indicated this would be at the Air Cargo Terminal due to inclement weather. It has been rescheduled to the airport terminal, and it'll be in the mezzanine level. I'd love to see all five of you there. This is one of the most significant projects that regionally the five governing bodies have put together. And I think it probably in our generation, you know, when you think back in the early 1970s of the Tri-County Industrial Park, these governing bodies, same governing bodies plus Carter County, came together and created something really significant in Piney Flats. And that area now has, it's built out to its capacity, it has almost 2,400 manufacturing jobs. And this is, this, I think, is, every bit is monumental, if not more so than that. So I hope you'll all have an opportunity to be there in the morning. Also, this Saturday, we have our annual Veterans Day Parade at 10 o'clock. You have a float reserved. Our Parks and Recreation Department has put together a similar ride that you had in the Fourth of July Parade. Mr. Tim Beavers will be your chauffeur, and the parade will begin to form up at 9:30 at that Morrison Boulevard, West State Street area, and parking will be in that immediate area also. I'd also like to encourage you to attend our second listening session, which will be Monday at noon in the Annex Conference Room. If you recall, the listening session came out of our retreat that we had in 2016 that talked about having periodic pulse, I guess, checks with our development community to learn what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. This is, we had one earlier this year, this is our second of those. But perhaps more importantly, we're going to use this opportunity for our public works staff to talk about the utility investment incentive program for new residential developments. So we've, as council has suggested, we have maps there that illustrate vacant property, both inside the city as well as outside the city, but inside our urban growth boundary and near our existing utilities that would be ideal for this type of development. So I hope you'll all be able to be a part of that. I know our Community Relations staff is getting the word out, and we hope to have a good turnout for that. Believe in Bristol will be hosting their annual Christmas Open House on Monday, November 20th. And Maggie, does that start at 5:00 or 5:30? 5:30, okay, it goes to 8:00? 8:30? Okay. So that's always a nice festive event, and it's great to support our downtown community. Also, we'll have the annual Community Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on Monday, November 27th in Cumberland Square. And I think this starts at 7:00 officially, but there's always hot chocolate, and it's always a good community event and good to start off the holiday season. Our November Work Session, then, will be on Tuesday, November 28th. Also, on December 5th, we have tentatively, and this is kind of a save-the-date moment for you, we've tentatively scheduled Tuesday, December 5th, as our Coffee with the Mayors. And as Councilwoman Powers mentioned earlier, this is an opportunity for the mayors and the councils and staff from both cities to meet with our downtown merchants, to learn of concerns. And in the past, we've had a number of topics that have come out, but certainly, the downtown trees was one of those a couple of years ago. This year's event will take place, as I indicated, on December 5th at 8:00 a.m. at the Cafe Bloom Listening Room. And then our annual Christmas Parade will be on Thursday, December 7th. And I know you've all participated in that, and in the past, we'll do a similar type arrangement that we had last year, where we'll walk along the parade route and hand out candy, and we'll have one of our fire apparatus. Matter of fact, we've received delivery of our new quint that will be assigned to Station 5, and that will be our representative in the Christmas Parade. And I guess, lastly, speaking of Station 5, there are a few final punch list items that the contractor is going through, but I know Chief Barnes and I have had that conversation, that we've got to have our grand opening of that and the ribbon cutting on his watch. So the meter's running, Chief. So that's it.
All right. City Council comments?
Go ahead, Lee.
All right.
Well, yeah, busy two months coming up, right? I want to address one of the statements that was made about manufacturing jobs. And I want to take us back about 22 years. 1995 was when the NAFTA agreement first came into effect and started the mass exodus of jobs out of the United States. It was the first free trade agreement that the United States made, and it was on this North American continent it happened. Since then, I can't tell you how many other free trade agreements have happened. Jack, you may know, you've got a manufacturer- Jack, you may know, you've got a manufacturing background as well as I do, but it's been a lot, and it's not a level playing field. We are not, we have a lot of our manufacturers here that export that are being treated, they have to pay 20% tariffs, 18% tariffs, 15% tariffs with things going into other countries, and I'm talking about China as one of them, whereas when their products come into our country, there is no tariff. So it is not fair what's happening to our manufacturing jobs and our manufacturing facilities within the United States. What are we doing here to address that? Well, I can tell you right now, we've had three hiring expos in the last two years trying to fill somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 to 3,000 jobs in about 14 different sectors of the economy, including manufacturing. We have the Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services Business Park that is right now being plateaued, about 40 or 50 acres, that's being plateaued and being pad-ready for new industry to come into it. We do have our own economic development team with the city, as well as Network, Sullivan Networks, that is a crucial point from when we get state leads for any type of business entity of size that's coming from the state. Chamber of Commerce is another good example of how businesses, especially on the small business side of things, and the things that they do to help folks start new businesses. It was mentioned a little while ago, the city manager, a regional effort with Aerospace Park at the Tri-Cities Airport, 180 acres of land that's going to be plateaued and be pad-ready for industry to come in. We think that could be huge for our entire region, and I'm probably leaving out a lot of other things that you guys could...
Partnership Part II.
Partnership Part II, Leah Powers just now mentioned, putting utilities in there. By the way, we've had expansions of existing businesses and new businesses to open up. I was just in the Industrial Park in Washington County, Virginia, and there are many buildings over there that are empty now, that used to have thriving businesses. If you look in the Bristol Industrial Park, just off Weaver Pike, where my plant was 20-some years ago, that plant is fairly full. There may be a little bit of vacant land, but we have businesses that are expanding within that industrial park. So I can tell you this, that every effort that we can possibly use, any tool that we can possibly use, we are using it to bring those businesses and industry into town. But I can also tell you, everybody else in the country is dying for that manufacturing plant that has 250 or 500 or 1,000 jobs. So we're doing everything we possibly can, and all hands on deck, believe you me, we all know exactly what we need to do to bring economic development to town. I had someone mention to me that there's a large offline retailer, online retailer, that has 50,000 administrative jobs, and the question was, is why aren't we going after that? After that? Well, I'm sure that we are going after some aspect of that, but right now, we're having, by going into southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, Kentucky, North Carolina, trying to fill 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 jobs that we have right now in Bristol, Tennessee, can you imagine how difficult it would be to fill 50,000 administrative jobs on that type of a level? So it's a difficult situation, we all know that, but we are really, I promise you, doing everything we possibly can to make those things happen. I do want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, but I want to also say really quickly too, that this time of the year, there are folks that are maybe alone in our neighborhoods that we work with, maybe in the nursing home, that it's a great time of the year to reach out to them and maybe invite them to your table for Thanksgiving. And so we are all blessed, very much so, and I think if we all think about that one or two people with, somebody that we know that may be lonely during these holidays, it'd make a huge effect on their life. Happy Thanksgiving.
I'll go. You know, we had mentioned the Veterans Day Parade and that it'll be this Saturday. As the daughter of a Marine that served in the Korean conflict, when our veterans come home, it doesn't end there. When our veterans come home, they have to reconnect to their communities, they have to go back into the workforce, they have to become reacquainted with their families, and the military training and everything that they've experienced, a lot of it is so valuable in all these aspects. But my dad was trained to be a warrior, and when he came home, they didn't suddenly just say, "Okay, you're no longer going to be a warrior." He approached life as a warrior. He was a small business owner, and he was dogmatic in the way that he ran his business. He was very successful, as Marines are. I was fortunate to be a member of his platoon of two. My brother and I served in my father's platoon, and we were taught what great life skills. But at times, it was difficult because the expectation was that of military personnel, and he had to be reminded at times that we were children, and that we were a family, and that we were not going into combat, but that we were going to school. And so the service that our veterans offer us, we can never thank them enough, but their families deserve our thanks as well, because their service doesn't end when they come home. It is a part of who they are, and they are tremendous contributors to our community. And so I would like to just give a special thanks to our veterans, and as the child of a veteran, I would like to give a special thanks to their families. I have a whole laundry list of things here that I'm very thankful for that are going on in Bristol, but I won't go into all of those. I would like to say, the Assistant State Controller, Jason Mumpower, was in an accident coming back from Nashville on Thursday evening. He is recovering, but it was a very traumatic situation, and we're very thankful that he's okay. Another, Clay Walker, who is our Executive Director for our Network's Economic Development Team, has lost a family member unexpectedly, and that's always hard. Shifting gears, the YWCA will have their Turkey Trot on November 18th at 8:00. It is the oldest all-female Turkey Trot in the state, and the reason that it is still all women is that it is women empowering women, and it's a lot of fun, and they raise a great, great amount. Shifting gears just a little bit, I would like to remind us that we live in a very precarious world, you know, with the shooting in Las Vegas, with the tragedy of New York City, and most recently, in Texas. Today, I had the privilege of attending a presentation by the Executive Director of the Soenzen Institute, and he was talking about politics and how they are becoming so overly woven in our lives, and the anxiety that it's creating in us as a people, and that we need to stop and step back and take a look and realize, based on our political parties, we are not adversaries. We are still people, we are still neighbors, we are still family members, we're still colleagues, to be respected and cared for, and to not let our politics become such a great divide that we square off against each other. I'm very appreciative of being able to sit in this position and wish all of you a very blessed Thanksgiving, and to reiterate what Chad said, you know, let's all reach out as best we can and include those around us. Thank you.
I've got a couple of things to add on a couple of things that have been discussed so far. Wanted just to share that there's an initiative that United Way is helping to nurture and grow, which is Jobs for Life, which is a program out of North Carolina that primarily, it's faith-based and comes primarily out of church work, but there's going to be one done together in Bristol, and then with the hope and plan that different churches will offer it. But it is an intensive mentoring program for job skills, where volunteer mentors work with applicants who want to participate, who want to get jobs or improve the job career that they have, and it's a session, eight-week session, two meetings per week, and the success rate is, within two months afterwards, about 75% of the people have better jobs or jobs where they did not have jobs. And it's not that their mentors get them jobs, it's networking, it's learning the skills, it's learning how to look for jobs, how to do resumes, et cetera. It's an exciting program that's starting here in Bristol, and if anybody's interested in being a mentor, there's still opportunities to do that now or to do that later. Also, just wanted to celebrate and say thank you for the consent agenda item for sidewalks that still were a long way off, but the engineering study for Virginia Avenue sidewalks that'll go from Cedar Street and then a join all the way down to Bristol Housing Property that's further out on Virginia Avenue. And I think as we think about people who have needs and appreciate things in our community, that there are quite a few of our citizens in that area that will greatly, greatly appreciate the safety, as well as the community building that sidewalks will do. I didn't have on my list, Nature Center opening, I shouldn't fail to do that, mention that. Nature Center open wasn't quite done with a couple of the displays, but by now, it's probably pretty close, and there, Teri says this much, on the couple that weren't quite finished, there's still some unfunded displays, there's still opportunities for folks to be sponsors, and also, any gift of any amount helps. We appreciate the newspaper helping with all the media coverage, et cetera. If you have not gone, it is very exciting, I'm looking at Rush out there who's on the board. It's very exciting, it's a great opportunity for our community, and also, I'll just put a plug in also for research, that we live in a part of the world that is more diverse biologically than anywhere else, or maybe tied with a couple of places. Anyway, it's a great opportunity for research for what we have preserved with the park as an island in the middle of an urban area. So great opportunities for future research, as well as education for kids, et cetera. Also, just make note of the hospital merger, going to be interesting to see how that plays out, and certainly exciting and also a little scary as well, so we have our fingers crossed and hope for the best, and it's a big deal to be able to make that happen now that it's real. Also, we'll mention that yesterday, seems like forever, yesterday morning at 7:30, got to be at a program that Chrissy Hallam spoke, the governor's wife, also Candace McQueen, who is the Commissioner of Education. Dr. Lilly was there on a panel, and it was excellent, talking about the importance of education, particularly emphasis on reading and reading on grade level. I'm hoping that our, not hoping, I'm planning that our community is going to have a lot more conversation. We have had some reading buddies has really raised the visibility, but talking more about what we're doing and what more we can do to help our students read on grade level. So excited, and Chrissy Haslam was great, so was Candace McQueen, and so was Dr. Lilly. Really good, very informative. Also, some people went to Roanoke for the train, so that's pretty exciting, and we're hoping in the next several months to kind of kick off for our share of getting the train to Bristol, Virginia first, is trying to get our Tennessee folks excited and educated for what it takes for Tennessee to promote rail and for the train to go through Bristol, not to Bristol. So anyway, and the last thing, well, I kind of got out of order, is that long education is the Tennessee Promise still needs mentors, I forgot, 177 in Sullivan County, 177 still needed in Sullivan County. That's serving as a mentor for the kids who sign up for that to do community college for no cost. So encourage folks that are not already mentoring to sign up, and people will help you to be a mentor, and if you already have some buddy, sign up for 77 more. So, thank you.
And many of those students for the mentorship program have not had a family member in a college experience, so that's a unique approach that many of those mentors do provide in that setting. I've got three items I'd like to touch on tonight. We have, we had a privilege of having both our Network's Executive Director, our Mayor of Kingsport, and myself to participate with the Tennessee delegation to the Southeast U.S. and Japan Conference that was hosted in Greenville, South Carolina a couple of weeks ago, and did you know that Japan invests, of all the foreign direct investment in Tennessee, 51% comes from Japan? That's the Nissans, the Bridgestones, and Mayaki right here in FIBS Bend, that was one of those economic development projects announced this year. Those lead to a variety of opportunities from those foreign dollars, but also, it was about building relationships, and it was great to have the county as a whole, as well as the state represented at that meeting, and that also gave us some time with our state partners, and really a good time to be able to sit down. We even had Governor Haslam down briefly, and another person, Ambassador, former Secretary of State, Bill Hagerty, was also there, and he is right here, he's a Tennessee boy. So it was great to see how well Tennessee is represented in the international spectrum when it comes to industry and opportunity. Another thing I want to touch on is with Veterans Day around the corner, there's some great services that I know my church and several others are doing some very special services to honor our veterans, and grateful to see that, and would encourage some of our folks to get out and see a little about what that's about, as well as we come to the Thanksgiving time, and finding some extra folks to either bring into your home or to go out and serve, it's always a great opportunity. I know I'll be traveling for the first time, but we, for the first time on Thanksgiving in a number of years, and it actually ended up being because of some hurricanes in Florida. We had some guests come up early, and it was challenging to make that second extra trip with all the things that they're dealing with in Florida currently, so we're going to go down there and see what awaits us. So we have some great opportunities, and I will close with saying happy Thanksgiving, and I am thankful for my family and my church. With that, we are adjourned. With that, we are adjourned.